... the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The town clerk will read the notice.
Please take notice that the Town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 14th, 2024, at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, 1215 Center Road, Reinbeck, in the Town of Clinton, New York, at 6:25 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning proposed local law number X of 2024 entitled, "A Local Law Updating the Sexual Harassment Policy Pursuant to Article 16 of the New York Town Law." This local law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the Town of Clinton Clerk's Office and the Town of Clinton's website for inspection during the regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date, time, and place aforesaid.
Thank you, Carol. This is a public hearing on the sexual harassment policy written by Elliot and Catherine.
Kathy.
Kathy Gallinger.
Oh, Kathy, sorry. Do we have anything to add?
Nope, I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
So, anyone with a comment, please use some mic.
You have to call to order.
Maybe just, um...
You have to call the meeting to order.
I heard...
Maybe you didn't. I don't think so. Yeah, whatever.
Well, nobody seems to remember.
I think it might be worth explaining why it should, why we're doing it as a law, not a policy.
Well, the idea, well, first, there's several reasons. The first one is that it already exists as a law, an earlier version, that this is a, of which this is a fairly substantial revision. And the main premise, we did discuss this and also with the attorney, and a law has more oomph than a policy. And so, basically, could have done it as a policy, he preferred it as a law, I think the Perma folks would prefer it as a policy, and since we already had a policy, that's what we decided to do.
Thank you for that.
So, what you were saying is I make a motion to open the floor to public comments?
I'll second it.
End the discussion. Motion carried. We'll wait a minute and then close it.
Okay, so this is done. Right?
Yeah, for a moment.
So, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
End the discussion. Motion carried. I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
End the discussion. Meeting adjourned.
Charlie, you're gonna want to turn on your mic for the meeting.
And one more minute, we'll start the regular meeting.
While we're waiting, anybody, new audience, can take one free book.
They're right here. That's...
All right, I'm calling the meeting to order. We will...
Don't be wishing bad things on us.
We will start by approving minutes. Sorry. Uh, yes, Elliot.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Minutes.
Okay. I will move that we approve the minutes of the April 9th, 2024, public hearing on the farm law.
Second.
Is there a second? All discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, and I will approve, I will, or move that we approve the minutes from the April 9th, 2024 regular town board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I will move that we approve the April 30th, 2024, meetings from the, excuse me, minutes from the special town board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, that we approve the May 10th, 2024 bid opening minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, public discussion, anyone have a comment on the agenda? I am gonna open it, 'cause we did receive an email. Do you have it? So, I will move to open the floor to public discussion. Is there a second?
Second, second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Elliot's gonna read.
I'm reading this on behalf of Ray Oberly, who is out of town and not sure he'll be back in time to speak at the meeting. So, here goes. "I, Ray Oberly, continue to request the allocation of ARPA funds to install the requested standby electric generator to provide electricity for the whole town complex. As I previously stated, this generator is needed to run the computers, lights, elevators, heat and cooling, water, and bathrooms. The ARPA funds are clearly known available funds. Grants for standby generators are not easily obtained." And thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Elliot. Any other comments on the agenda? All right, I make a motion to close public discussion and return to the regular order of business.
Second.
Is any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor's comments, Elliot will read for me.
Okay, on behalf of our supervisor. Clinton Town Offices, Highway Department, Justice Court Office, and Court will be closed for Memorial Day on Monday, the 27th. The library will also be closed that day. Dutchess County is holding its annual cleanout for hazardous materials, the collection event. To facilitate disposal of hazardous materials is being held on Friday, the 31st of May. You can get rid of hazardous chemicals, oil-based paint, pesticides, mercury, fluorescent bulbs, and more. In a cost-effective and environmentally sound manner, you must register for the event by the 1st of May, which is actually two weeks ago.
Yes.
So, anyway.
But you still have time.
You still have time. Call 845-463-6020, or go to www.dutchess.gov/solidwaste to register. Okay, the month of May is Mental Health Awareness Month. This is an opportune time to fight stigma, provide support, increase awareness, and remind individuals of the services and resources that exist to support millions of people impacted by mental health issues. The National Helpline is a free confidential, 24/7, 365 days a year treatment referral and information service in both English and Spanish for individuals and families facing mental and/or substance use disorders. Call 800-662-4357. Not on the agenda tonight, but something my office has been working on is a replacement for animal control services that the Dutchess County SPCA will no longer provide as of June 2nd. An intermunicipal agreement is being worked on with several towns. We will make an appointment to this position at the next meeting. Peggy Kurtz made a presentation here on community choice aggregation on April 24th here in Town Hall. If you'd like to learn more about the CCA program that the town board will consider in coming months, the presentation can be found on the town YouTube channel. Questions can also be answered by calling Jewel at 845-859-9099, or emailing them at info@hudsonvalleycommunitypower.com. Clinton Community Library is holding a book sale this weekend. My colleague, Councilwoman Osbitz, will provide details when she gives her liaison report. And save the best for last. Susan DeHan has been selected as the 2024 EMS Mentor of the Year, and the East Clinton Fire Department has been selected as the winner of the 2024 EMS Agency of the Year. They were selected by the Dutchess County EMS Council. Town of Clinton sends our congratulations to Susan and the ECFD for recognition of their hard work, and we thank them for all they do for our community. And finally, last but not least, Carol Mackin, our town clerk, has been named to the 2024 Municipal Clerk's Honor Roll. It's a highly competitive contest. Carol has been doing important work for our community for many years, as most of us know, literally through sickness and health. She has been available to all of us. She is an inspiration, and we thank Carol for her dedication to the community, and we send her our well-earned congratulations. So, there you go. And that is, those are the supervisor's comments.
Thank you. And we move to that one.
I'll just add a couple things, besides seconding particularly the mention for Susan and for Carol and for the ECFD. The REC, the REC program, in collaboration with the Clinton Library, has established passes for the REC park. Now, these would be temporary passes, one day, two days, what have you. They are available from the library, similar to the museum pass collection that they have. And I guess they are available now that the season is open. Okay. And finally, there's gonna be a, some of you may have already heard about this, a community garage sale will be held at the REC park on Saturday, the 25th, from 9:00 to 3:00. Admission is free. We are looking for families who want to sell items. Bring your stuff, bring your table. If you want to reserve a spot, call 845-418-8293. And I would like to acknowledge Samantha Campbell, who took the lead, as I understand, on making this event happen, and she deserves credit for that. And that's it for me.
Did you say that?
Did I say admission is free? Admission is free. Bring your own table, right.
So, uh...
That's it for me.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
We move on to town board reports. Councilperson Restella.
All right, thank you. The CAC wanted to announce this, new microphones are much louder. They were able to get the National Resource Inventory Maps mounted on FoamCore. They are currently housed in the Masonic Hall. They're gonna get a rack for them, and if you're interested in that and you'd like to see them, they will be at the book sale, the library book sale this coming weekend, and we'll have the map so that you can take a look. And I have to say, they're, it's very interesting to look at them, and they're also actually kind of beautiful, so. As far as ZBA, their meeting was about the Sixth Sense determination, and they will be, I believe, giving their decision on their meeting this month, May 29th. And the planning board, as always, they're both very, very busy. The planning board is busy looking at ground-mounted solar, an accessory dwelling permit, two short-term rentals, a campground permit, and a demolition permit. I did want to mention that with the ground-mounted solar, it's interesting, and I mention this because I don't think people realize that they get help from lots of other places. So, the CAC always gives their report, their advisory only, so it's nice that they work together that way, so just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Councilperson Osbitz.
There you go, the highway report. The month of April had the highway crew cleaning roads on two different occasions for winter weather-related conditions. Repair and replacement work took place on the grader with a new braid, blade, and new batteries. The york rake had new tines put on the attachment, and the crew repaired the shield for the roadside mower. Screen shale was hauled in and stored for an upcoming project on Kansas Road. Culvert repairs and prep work were done using the mini excavator on Kansas Road. More about Kansas Road in a minute. Various roads received cold patch due to winter damage. Work zone and flagger training took place this month. Several crew members were sent to Cornell Cooperative Extension for an all-day class that was run by Cornell Local Roads. And interdepartmental aide performed tree word work, I can't talk tonight, at Pleasant Plains Cemetery. The crew cut and hauled wood away to help the cemetery department. The mini excavator was used along with the chipper. Clay was hauled for the REC department and dropped at Friends Park for use in the ball field. The highway crew hung the newly repaired Town of Clinton sign that was damaged due to a storm. And also going to add a thank you from the library for the help the highway crew provided bringing books up from the basement, and as you can see, that was a lot of work. So, thank you, and Melissa, thank you for the big print.
Can I add, Melissa, thank you for calling Dutchess County and having them fix the potholes on Hollow Road, which were big enough to stop the Russian Army if they came down.
Just a quick question. I think the tree removal was at Providence, wasn't it? You're talking about the walnut tree? It was at Providence, not Pleasant Place. Yeah, it was at Providence. Yeah, okay. That's all right.
Did I read it wrong?
No, I think he just wrote it wrong.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Councilperson Warner?
You want the library?
More, sorry, Osbitz.
You want me to do it very first?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay. Big week for the library. We have the book sale and plant sale. The preview night is Thursday, May 16th. It starts at 5:00 PM, 5:00 to 7:00, and the entrance fee is $10. On Friday, May 17th, the book sale is open from 1:00 to 6:00. On Saturday, the 18th, from 9:00 to 3:00. And on Sunday, the 19th, they're doing a $5 bag sale. And just on Saturday, the plant sale will be held just outside Town Hall from 9:00 to 3:00. And the Historical Society and Community Day Committee will be inside Town Hall.
Thank you.
Okay.
Person Warner?
All right, let's see. Well, let's start with the Building Department. Business was a little slow this month relative to last. Nine building permits issued, one COCC issued, six title searches, about $1,800 worth of cost of construction. The REC committee met on April 29th, and just a quick, a few quick comments, very informative pediatric and first aid class was held on the 27th, led by Susan Dehan, whom we spoke about before, Bob Simon of the East Clinton Fire Department. Basketball players ages 12 and up are invited to register their team for a three-by-three tournament on the 25th at Fran Mark Park. REC is supporting a community art sale in conjunction with basketball tournament, which you've heard about, so there's no need to repeat that. 2024 Banners Up fundraising program is in full swing. Please contact the REC department. This is over at Friends Park. Please contact the REC department if you would like to purchase a banner for your business that can be displayed on the baseball fence. Just by way of background, last year, there were 12 banners sold. To date this year, we've already passed that number, 13 have been sold. Seven of those are return customers, six of those are new customers. The hope is that we can get some more of those return customers back and end up with considerably more activity than we had last year, so that's good news. On Saturday, the 18th, which is coming up fast, the Hiking Club will be hiking the Roosevelt Farm and Forest Trail in Hyde Park, starting at 9:00. Anyone looking to rent a pavilion at Fran Mark should check the calendar to see available dates. Rental form is on the website, dates are filling up quickly. Lifeguards are still needed for the summer. Application forms are on the website. Swimming at Fran Mark opens on Memorial Day weekend. There are still openings for the 2024 Summer Camp. Registration on the website, and check out the recreation calendar and the newly updated REC page on the town website for additional updates. Next meeting of the REC committee will be here on June 24th at 7:00. That is the last Monday of the month. Let's see, Scenic Roads met April 15th to talk about and plan the scenic, the cleanup, the annual spring cleanup, which was held on the 20th, and who would be attending and taking care of the dumpster and the details. Nine participants from the community came, at least signed in, there may have been others who did not, left a pretty good amount of stuff compared to last year. I'm told it's better this year than it was last year. Rick McLaughlin, who is the chair of the Scenic Roads Committee, would like to thank everyone for participating in this year's road cleanup and hopes to see everyone next year. Orders were taken for crocus and daffodil bulbs for planting around town and at home, people's homes, and that, of course, will happen in the fall. Let's see, here we go. The Climate Smart Task Force did not meet this month. They will meet again on May 28th, which is the fourth Tuesday, I believe, of the month. And our small but earth game cemetery committee met yesterday, mostly to discuss plans for summer cleanup and maintenance. One of the things we talked about, if you remember, last year, we did a grave cleaning workshop on a Saturday at Pleasant Plains, which was well-attended, and hoping maybe we can do another one this year, except we'll do this one at Schultzville, which needs some attention. And I think that's it, for me.
Thank you. Anyone else have a report? All right, old business, and we go right back to Elliot with the farm law.
Okay. Well, we've been there and back a number of times, and unless anybody has anything to add to what we've already discussed, I will simply go ahead and make a motion that the town board approves. Following resolution, be it resolved, town board approves resolution number of 2024, adopting local law number of 2024 entitled Revised Local Law, Amending Town Code to Provide for the Regulation of Farm Operations and Agricultural Businesses. A copy of which is attached here too and may part of this resolution, and further that the town clerk is directed to enter this local law in the minutes of this meeting and give due notice of the adoption of this local law to the Secretary of State of New York.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, so the informational permit is automatically part of the local law, or is that something that's just internal?
I believe that is, that is part of the law. Is that not right, Jeff? The informational permit? It's one unit.
Thank you. That's all I just wanted to confirm.
All right.
Going once, going twice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most guaranteed. Number two is Elliot again.
We had a public, we just had a public hearing a few minutes ago on the sexual harassment law. We discussed briefly that this is an update of a law that already exists that was passed, I think, back in 2018. Perma has asked us to update it, and after some discussion, we decided to do it as a local law to provide more authority than if we would do it as a town policy. So, having said that, be it resolved that the town board approves resolution number of 2024, adopting local law number entitled Local Law Adopting Sexual Harassment Policy, a copy of which is attached and made a part of this resolution, and further that the town clerk is directed to enter this local law in the minutes of the meeting, this meeting, and give due notice of the adoption of this local law to the Secretary of the State of New York. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
What's your turn?
Now it's mine. The public meetings policy, last month, I said we will put it off. Unfortunately, we're doing the same, so we have now heard from the Association of Towns, and I yesterday received their comments, and our attorney is looking at them and discussing it with me, so we will hopefully approve it at the next meeting. There will be changes to it that, from what you see here, but we'll discuss that next meeting. Any other comments?
Is this gonna be a policy or a law?
Well, I thought of it as a policy, but Shane's thinking is a law, and that is something we need to discuss, 'cause I actually disagree on that. So, we'll discuss that.
What has, did the Association of Towns give you their opinion as to policy or law?
No, he asked though, and we haven't heard back, so.
I would be interested here.
Yeah, I would too. Councilperson Osbitz.
This is for the Town Hall basement. Two bids were received on May 10th, and the town engineer is now checking references.
All right. Any other comments?
Did we, was it ever confirmed that it's no longer asbestos tile down there?
I'm sorry, that it's...
Did we confirm that it is not, what is currently down there is not asbestos?
No, but the, they're not picking up the tiles.
They're just going on top. Okay.
The tiles are being covered with a self-leveling cement.
Right, yes, and then the other...
So asbestos is not an issue.
I noticed that the one... I got it. Thank you.
All right. The next thing is short-term rentals. I will pass it to Elliot to make the motion and then discuss it.
On behalf of Supervisor Witten, I move the town board approves the following resolution, number four, number, resolution number of 2024, introducing local law number of 2024 entitled STR Local Law Update, and sets a public hearing on Tuesday, the 11th of June, 2024, at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, 1215 Center Road, Reinbeck in the Town of Clinton, New York, 6:25 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, in discussion, there are a lot of changes. I'll speak slow, which shouldn't be hard. The, so originally, the changes we're making is we replace zoning administrator with municipal code enforcement inspector. We made renewals of non-hosted STRs, the purview of the MCI, in order to save the planning board time and make the process more streamlined. We added cesspools to all references of septic tanks, and septic and cesspools need to be inspected every two years. Right now, it's just once, and that's it. So, every two years. To fix the problem we have with LLCs and just creating many of them, and so the same person owns a bunch of STRs, we have now changed LLC to ultimate beneficial owner. So, it doesn't matter who owns the LLC, the ultimate beneficial owner is what counts. So, they should only be able to own, I think we said... So they should only be able to own, I think we say, two.
So that translates to who's getting the rental fees?
Yeah. The STRs were added to the schedule of uses, which hasn't been added yet. The renewal process has changed from 90 days to 30 days, with a 10-day processing of renewals. And there's a two-week grace period if deficiencies are found during the walkthrough of the property. This was done in consultation with Jeff Newman and Ardean Campbell. An accessory dwelling unit, as it relates to non-hosted STRs, was in conflict with 250-29, which is our ADU law. So ADUs have been removed from the definition of non-hosted STRs. And this should make the law tighter and more difficult for someone to have multiple STRs on one property, one parcel. We need to talk about the fees and increase them and fines. So that, the fees and fines are kind of, are not part of the law, but we should discuss those. Currently, the fees are for a non-hosted special permit, $500. And non-hosted renewal is $350. A hosted certificate is $275, and a renewal is $175. I think those should be increased. We can have that discussion now, or you can think about it, and we can change the fee schedule next month. But I encourage everyone to at least look at the fee schedule to see what they are and increase those if we can.
So, may I ask you a question?
Yeah.
The, you said, with their things that need to be fixed for a renewal, how long do they have to?
So right now, 90 days before the end of their permit. So we are changing it to 30, because at 90 days, they forget.
Okay.
We're finding out.
Okay, I will say, there was a long discussion at a meeting yesterday about deadlines and 10 days. And so you might want to have a conversation with the planning board and Jeff about the reasons for that, and if it's beneficial or detrimental to their work. And this may not be a problem, but it's interesting that it came up again.
All right.
Do we, does anyone know what the fees are for other, in other towns?
Oh, I'll look at that, actually.
It's just a good place to start, is to see. I don't know that I, you know, it gives us a frame of reference. But my, my initial thought is the non-hosted should be pretty steep, and the hosted I'd like to keep.
Yeah.
Reasonable.
I agree. So then we come to fines. And I want to make sure I say it right. So I don't have what the fines are now, but.
It's on the same page as the?
Is it?
Here, okay.
Oh, I have it. So the first offense is $1,000 for a minimum and $2,000 for maximum. We, I propose changing that to $2,000 and $3,000. The second offense is currently $2,000 and $4,000. I propose $3,000 and $5,000. And the third offense is a $4,000 minimum with a $8,000 maximum. And I propose a $5,000 and $10,000. Any thoughts on that? And obviously, we have a month.
So it says each, each week's continual violation shall constitute a separate additional violation? So they're just going to keep stacking up?
Yeah, every week.
Every week, they're good, okay.
Yeah.
All right. And the violations and the, the violations and the fees are the, will be, planning and zoning department fall under that, yes?
Yes.
And then keeping track of how many short-term rentals someone has or the beneficial owner, that's the assessor's office?
Well, it's, yeah, them too, yeah.
Okay.
They have granted this, which helps.
Where are these violations recorded?
And the violations are, if you look at the town code and look up fines, they're under enhanced, what is it called?
I think Charlie means if you get, if you receive a violation.
If you have a violation, where do you go to read what that violation is?
Yeah, so the numbers, you mean?
No, I mean the actual physical violation. What, what caused the violation?
The process, so if someone receives a violation on their home for whatever reason.
So they'll get the violation from the MCI.
Okay.
And he follows up. They have a certain amount of time to fix a violation, and if it's not fixed, then.
I mean, we need to be, I'm saying, we need to be precise what the violation is.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it turns into a legal mess. Oh, I fixed that, no, you didn't.
Well, they've already, this is not a new process, this is something that they are doing right now. What we're discussing right now is increasing the fees.
And fines.
When people apply for permits, do they get a copy of this?
They will, yeah.
You know, the violation?
Oh, they could. We, I don't know if they've always had one, but.
I mean, certainly a detriment.
It's on the website, under town code.
I know, but having it in your face is very different.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
If you want included in the law.
Yes.
And these fees here are yearly, these?
So in the law, the, it says they'll receive a, an enhanced zoning violation, and then they have to look up what they are. Yeah, yeah, so that can be added.
And yes, their annual renewals.
Their annual renewals.
So that is what is being introduced. Any other discussion? Did I talk slow enough?
Thank you for doing that, Mike.
Yeah.
It's definitely something that people are, that want addressed, so I appreciate you working on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, just for what it's worth, I've mentioned this before, and we've had a back-and-forth around and out. I'm, I still have a concern about absentee homeowners who never use these things, do not live there, have never even been to the Town of Clinton, who are using these properties as a cash machine.
So if?
I'm not talking about people who live here.
The hosted is different, yeah.
Yeah. That, to me, I would like to see some way of differentiating. I mean, there are admittedly, so for example, you have somebody who, for whom this is a second home, who lives in New York, or lives in somewhere else, is here six months of the year. Is not here for six months of the year. Rents the, rents it out, rents the building out, the home out, as a STR in their absence. Okay. We consider that non-hosted, okay. But that's very different from somebody who is absentee all the time.
Right, so, very valid point. Who and how, who's going to keep track of that?
That's a really good question.
I also.
That's a really good question.
We have a, we have a manpower problem in our town.
And Elliot and I have discussed this. I think that is a very small number.
It is a small number. Admittedly, it is a small number.
The other option is to?
Yes.
Outlaw non-hosted.
Which some towns do. Some towns do not allow non-hosted.
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm far against the moment, but it is an option.
But that, again, but that's, what you're doing there is you're lumping all these non-hosted people together, even though they may not be the same.
So if you live there for six months and rent it out for six months, is that considered hosted?
No, it's not hosted. Hosted means you have to be there.
Okay.
If you rent a room in your house?
Physically there.
Or a wing of your house, then you're hosted, so you're present.
As opposed to someone who owns the house and rents it out constantly, is never around.
That's what I'm referring to.
Okay.
It's also, outlawing it creates an enforcement issue.
Right.
Which we have already said we have. At least this way, we're getting fees and fines.
And we know where they are, and there's a problem.
The law says there has to be a local person who is a contact. And I would be interested in finding out how many complaints have come in. Because I think that number is small, too.
Oh, I'm sure the number is small.
So is, are we trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist?
Well, we did, I, I, I mean, there was definitely complaints at a planning or zoning board meeting that came up. It was, it was sort of, it was, that's not what the meeting was about, but it came up. And I do remember we had somebody come to a board meeting and say, her neighborhood's not the same, because it's all short-term rentals. But, I mean, that's, that's two, right, out of the whole town. So maybe we can encourage people to come in June and let us know their thoughts on the subject. It is, it is sticky, though, because it's hard enough to enforce.
Yeah.
You know, that's another manpower issue.
Then, of course, you have even another category, where you have people who live in the town and own a property, and they buy another property. And they use that as a short-term rental, even though they don't live there.
Hmm.
But they live in the town. So at least they're here.
Yeah.
Even though it's not on the same property. So things get really complicated.
Yeah, I would love to hear thoughts on how to keep track of that.
Having the vaguest idea. But anyway, for what it's worth.
You're right, but I don't, I just don't know how you.
So at June 11th, at 6:25, we're having a public hearing. I, and we do, on the grading.
Right, right.
So, any other discussion?
Would it be incumbent upon real estate agents to inform the potential renter that there are these fines and?
It would be, but we can't really control what they do in their business, you know? I mean, I think so, but.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to open a can of worms here, but we owned that house on Hollow Road for 20 years. It sat furnished and vacant and maintained. Rarely ever rented it out, except maybe one month during the summer, to a doctor from Houston. I was never aware there were permits, that kind of thing that you had to abide by.
There weren't.
There weren't, until just a few years ago.
Okay, well, then I'm legal, thank you.
You're all right.
Well, I mean, you, you can request it, but it's not going to happen. It's sort of like, you know, the, the guys that sell the plop-down sheds. Is it their responsibility to make sure that the homeowner's following zoning? No. Should they inform them? Sure. You know, I don't think we can, I don't think we can ask that.
Any others? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Martin Carey. Cameras.
Fran Mark Park first. This is a subject that we've been discussing off and on, I guess, for probably about six months. For security, cameras over at Fran Mark Park, there have been some issues there. We have three bids. One from ADT, one from Vector, and one from Janelle Security and Redhook. Janelle is the firm who installed the new, the new locks with the doors, with the touchpad, keypad, thingamajigs over on at the schoolhouse. People are very happy with the work they did. And in addition to which, their quote, their bid is substantially lower than either of the other two. So what I am going to do is propose that the Town Board approves a resolution for Janelle Security to install cameras, video cameras, at Fran Mark Park, at a cost not to exceed $3,050, using ARPA funds.
And these video cameras feed where?
Is there a second?
You change.
Second.
Any discussion?
The number is different from what is in, I mean, it's here, because the 3,050 allows us to add two cameras.
Well, that's what I was going to say, these?
2,450 is only one camera.
Okay, yeah, because these three quotes we have are not the same.
Right.
At all.
Right, but Dan spoke with Janelle and said how much if we want to add cameras. And they said it would be $300 per camera, and we can add up to, I think, two is what you said, right? Two cameras?
So this is three cameras?
So, so that would be?
Well, this allows us to add two.
So for 3,450, it's equivalent to the ADT quote?
As I read the bids.
For four?
Except that Janelle, Dan, why don't you come up, because you're better at this stuff than I am. As I understand, the, the big difference in price is that the Janelle bid is not live.
It's not what?
It's not live, it's not.
Oh, it's not a live feed?
Yeah, Janelle's not a live feed.
As opposed to? Go ahead.
We really don't need a live feed down there, because no one's going to sit there and watch the park. You know, basically, it's all on tape, so if something were to happen, you know, you can pull the tapes and you can see what happened.
And that also explains why.
No, that's, it's, there's no live feed, it's not going to a command post.
ADT and Vector, they're all live feeds.
Okay.
With that comes a monthly fee.
Sure, Janelle is just watching and recording.
We're just recording, and to me, that's, that's really sufficient.
That's fine. And they keep the tape for roughly how long, 30 days, or?
Oh.
Does it erase itself, I mean?
I think, I would have to get the, how long, it's at least 30 days, if not longer.
Okay, and then you can access the video yourself from overview?
If there, if you think there's a possibility that we might want to go to four.
We can go to four.
Then we should probably increase the number, again.
Any cameras do you want?
To 3,350, as an outside number.
Well, three would be sufficient.
So one?
You'd have one on the pavilion.
Focus on the pavilion.
Focus, it'd be on the pavilion shooting out, they need, could have two on the pole, one towards the basketball court, and one back towards the beach.
So we don't need four, three is sufficient?
Three would be sufficient right now. I mean, to get the ball really rolling, you could put one on the pavilion and get everything set up, and we could start on the pavilion. We have to run, which Elliot, remember, we, we.
Right.
We have to run power to one of the poles.
Right.
So that will be extra, so no matter who we use, we need power at the pole.
What about the backside of the pavilion, where that soccer field is?
If we wanted to, we could put another camera on the ba, on the pavilion on the top, and we could face the soccer field.
Well, is that?
And we could have, we could have four, one to the soccer field, one on the pavilion facing, say, the bathrooms playground area. Then you could have two on the pole, one facing the basketball court, another one facing down towards the beach, or however, which way you wanted to face it.
If, if we have the ARPA funds and you, let's get all the cameras that you want.
Okay, we'll go with four.
3,350 is four.
Revise the motion.
Do four?
Four is 3,350, 3,250.
So we should budget for four.
Okay, so we should budget for 3,250.
And that's still much lower than the others. 3,350.
So, that would be for four cameras.
Plus, we have to run power, we got to run the conduit. We schedule 40 out to the pole.
Even with the extra $900, it's significantly lower.
Yeah.
Because the other ones actually, they're actually bigger corporations, and they're also a live feed.
Yeah, but there's.
Which we don't need a live feed. What's that?
There's one bid, the next closest is 5,000 over, and has a monthly.
But then there's also fees up, right, exactly.
Yes. Yes. Are those the Ring cameras?
Well, I'm just saying, there's different, and there's a lot of different, and whatever ADT, I think they might be using, are all used these days.
Well, all three want power to the cameras.
So.
They all want.
They all want, they, all three, no matter what we do, we need, we need power. Not one mentioned solar. Who's watching the cameras?
So, I appreciate the comments.
I mean, I, I agree, a lot of cameras, but I don't know who's going to be watching them.
But we're also, if you do the live feed, then you're looking at another thousand dollars a year in, in monthly fees.
Monthly fee. So, I appreciate the comments.
Um, Dan, I have a follow-up question.
Yes.
Which is related but unrelated. The trail cameras that you got to kind of, like, have something better than nothing.
I've actually caught.
Do you, are you going to repurpose that, like, where?
Friends Park.
You're going to put them at Friends, okay.
I actually have a couple over there, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not against it, I'm just curious about how that was going to roll. Okay, so you're thinking four cameras, that brings it up to, we're going to say thirty, no, so no greater than four thousand dollars we're going to do, so that it's, we have a little wiggle room? Not to exceed, not to exceed four thousand dollars, do we have some wiggle room?
Over a thousand less than the others, so let's say four.
Forty-five.
And is there, was there?
Four is good.
Stop. Is, did, was there any indication from them when installation could take place?
Well, deny, I would say in a couple of weeks.
Okay, and has any discussion been had with the highway department, who I assume you're going to ask to trench? Or you have other plans?
But they can trench, and we get the, but I'll have to have electrician run the, the power.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let me ask a question. Does Jelle have the capability of going live if we ever needed that?
Yes.
Yes, so it could be upgraded.
We could upgrade to that, yes.
Okay. Good question, thank you.
We might be able to get some help with the electric. Talk to me later.
Thank you, Dan, thank you, Catherine.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
We just have to vote.
Yeah, so you made the motion.
Right.
Any other discussion? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Kansas.
Okay, now we'll go to Kansas.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a bit of a history here, which I'm sure most folks are familiar with. We've had some serious runoff issues for quite a number of years on Kansas Road. Several months ago, we had a couple of particularly bad storms. Michael and I, and I believe Todd, and the town engineers were out there, and talked about trying to come up with a plan that would alleviate the problem. And the engineer did, gave us a three-phase plan that would cost about half a million dollars, which of course was not even considered. We then went back to the drawing board, and Todd, the highway superintendent, came up with a plan that would involve repaving about a quarter mile of the road that had previously been paved, but the pavement had been removed some years ago, and cleaning out the culverts, and trenching, and various other things. So, we put together a, a survey, essentially, a letter that went out to the residents along that stretch of road. I believe there were, what, eight or nine residents along that stretch of road, signed by, by Michael as well as Todd, and said, here's our plan, what do you think? Basically, not, no details, no, no plans, just a concept. What do you think of the concept? And all but one said, no way in the world do we want this. So, we went back to the drawing board again, and as Marion indicated in her report, the highway folks were out there last week, and I asked Todd to put together a little narrative, so that I could read it here, and folks would know what's going on. Okay, so he writes as follows, Kansas Road is undergoing roadwork to improve the infrastructure and overall transportation. Initial prep work has been done to the road so that material can be put down. The highway crew has cleaned the ditches, runoffs, culverts, and cross culverts for adequate drainage. A subsoil of screened shale has been laid to produce a stable roadbed. A topcoat of gravel was then put down. A vibrating roller, rented vibrating roller is being used to compress the material, fill any voids, and reduce any friction spots. Now, this was just a, what, a week ago? So far, it's holding, but we'll see. It certainly promises to be a much better situation than it's been before, it's been up to now. If it works, that's great, if it doesn't, we have to revisit the issue at some point.
Any other comments? All right, thank you, all the, uh, again.
Oh my God, definitely on a roll here.
Yeah.
Okay, well, there's not much to report here. Looking into the installation of a historically accurate canopy on the front of the schoolhouse, which is exposed to the elements, there's no overhang, there's no nothing. So in rain, snow, sleet, what have you, it's difficult to get in there while you're holding, carrying two hands' worth of stuff. We have bids out to, let's see, we contacted five local vendors, two said, thanks but no thanks, and three have said they're interested, and so we're asked for bids. Hopefully, we'll have them between now and the next meeting, and we can have a serious discussion about where we go from here.
All right, uh, Councilperson Missello, and the evacuation.
Right, so, this is the last time we're going to discuss this.
Oh, don't make a promise.
Well, at least for a while. So where we stand is that CPL gave us a quote for evacuation routes, which I think are self-explanatory, for over five thousand dollars, and there was no appetite on the board to spend five thousand dollars on evacuation routes, especially since we've not been asked for this by Perma or any of our, you know, anyone that helps us keep our, our ducks in a row policy-wise. We did get an inexpensive quote from building maps, which I was encouraging, but because it's all done online, they were, it's based on the plans that we have, which are very incomplete. So we don't, because we don't have plans of all the buildings. So there's a lot of places that are not attended to. So I think we shelve the evacuation plan for now. You know, maybe a, somebody turns up that needs to do a project for their engineering class, or something like that, and we can get it. But we'll just, I'll just hang on to it, it's saved, and we'll see.
Thank you for all the work.
Oh, sure.
Catherine, this was a thing that you and I worked, did some work on about a year ago.
Yeah, we did, we did a walkthrough with Mike Cosenza, and it, it, I mean, it really, I mean, I think it was, it's a fire drill plant, basically. But it's, we have an interesting physical plant, number one, and we have an interesting staffing, because you never quite know who's going, who's going to be here at any minute, right? Everybody has varied hours, so there were some challenges that way. But there's, I don't think there's any point in, in adopting it without posted evacuation plans, so we'll just have to.
Well, we could go back to our school days and hold a fire evacuation drill one day, and make sure. Man, I'm looking at an exit site, I think I know how to get out of this building. It's not like these are the Pentagon here, I mean, we should double-check that everybody knows how to get out of their workspace. Signage, lights, and we're good.
All right, you.
That's all I got.
The next one is ARPA, there's yours, pass one down. So, um, we have talked about the floor, that's next month.
Hopefully.
The windows, I.
The windows, as far as I know, Stephen is looking into the parts that are needed to put it together.
So we'll have an answer on that. Uh, the highway doors, I think were, well, they were approved, we're waiting on them.
They're done.
They're done.
So I just got us on the bill, all right. The voucher. Solar panels, so I was hoping to have three quotes for you this time. I have two, I met with three people. The third said they would have a quote by today, by the meeting, and I did not receive it. So, seeing as I have a little time, hopefully next month, we will have a third quote. If I don't hear from the third company, there's plenty out there, so I will have a meeting with someone else. But so far, it looks like about twenty-seven thousand. I think I put fifty, so I told them all, you know, we're looking in the forty range, so it wouldn't go over fifty.
Where are you thinking of mounting them?
So, that's the next thing. We have had a varying degree of quotes. So two of them want to add to what exists. One thinks it's better to add to this building, but that quote came in very high. So, I think probably not. One of the companies that has talked about the highway salt shed is also given a second quote to add later a battery and other options if we want.
Okay, that's interesting.
But I'm waiting on the third, which I was very hopeful for. It's, it's the company that installed what we have.
That's right, we have, we have until June of twenty-five.
Like next month, so hopefully.
June of twenty-four to spend this money?
No.
To earmark it?
Yeah, the end of this year, to earmark it. So I was thinking June, so we'd have time. And then the end of twenty-six to spend it.
Okay, so we could have actually a lot, since you were budgeting fifty thousand, if it comes in at half that, or?
Yeah.
We could end up having a lot more left.
More left, yeah. But I'm trying to, and anything that isn't spent gets sent back. So the cameras we talked about, and agreed to four thousand, and the canopy next month. So that's what I have on them. Anything else in ARPA, I am certainly open to suggestions. So that is my update. Any other comments? All right, new business. So we received a letter from the building inspector, Mike Cosenza, informing us of two struc- structures that are in danger of falling down. It is our responsibility to accept his letter. And once we do that, we have to take certain steps to make it safe for the public. It could be fencing, it could be just signs, we'll decide that with the building inspector once we accept the letter. Any expense the town has will be added to the tax assessment. So hopefully, we don't actually spend money. It, it is included with taxes. So if you can make the motion for.
Sure. Uh, okay, on behalf of the supervisor, the town board approves the following resolution, number of two thousand twenty-four, to adopt the building inspector's report officially reporting two unsafe structures in the town, located at four eleven Ruski Lane and three hundred Ruski Lane.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
These, these are empty, these are unoccupied.
Yes, unoccupied, and the, the one at three hundred, I think is just a garage.
Right, it's a garage.
Yeah.
Yes.
We do know who owns the.
Yes, yes.
Are we in any contact with the owner?
They've been given violations, and, yeah.
Ignored?
Yeah. I leave that up to the building inspector.
Okay.
But, yes. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Councilperson Missello.
So, I was asked to investigate getting some charging stations for electric vehicles on town property. And the bottom line is, it's very expensive. So, there were, and there's, there's some underlying problems. So I had two people, one actually came out and looked, and thank you very much to Todd and Melissa, because they met them, and then also sent some follow-up pictures to, of the electric panels. And then the other one seemed to do it just from Google Earth. The big problem, as I see it, is that there's, I don't think that there's enough power in any of the panels that we have, so we're going to have to bring power from across the road. Or there's a pole near the Masonic Hall, so that's one thing that needs to be addressed. And then the charging stations themselves, because of the rebates, it makes more sense to do two than one. And after all the rebates, they're, it's between eleven and fifteen thousand dollars. So it's a lot of money, and I don't know how much use they would get. But we can certainly see where we land with the ARPA funds and take another run at it, if you like, or if you want to, we can pursue it. It just seems like an awful lot of money to me for.
So. Yeah.
The other option, which I wasn't able to get, well, no, that was the, the other option that I did not, these can, yes, we would not be paying for the electricity that the people use. But there's also, I'm told that there are companies that will come and install these free of charge, and then they make the money. And I wasn't able to put that together yet. So if you would like me to, I can look into trying to find a company that does it that way, so that there's no out-of-pocket cost by us, and then, but there's also no, you know, we don't, the town would make any money. Right, well, except that it's a service that we provide, or we're, you know, allowing.
This is for the convenience of the general public?
Mm-hmm.
We don't have any electric vehicles in our, in the territory.
No, we do not.
And is there a liability attached to that, Catherine, to these, to these?
To having the chargers?
I mean, are they going to blow up, and are we going to be liable?
No, I mean, I, we, you know, I suppose there's a possibility of it damaging somebody's vehicle possibly, I don't, I don't really know, but that's why we have insurance, I mean, we have, you know, we have plenty of insurance, so that's.
There's significant, the two quotes here are, are quite different. Nine thousand dollars, right, and one is twenty-three, and one was twenty-four, and the other one's fourteen.
The, the more expensive one is the company that actually came and looked.
That's Livingston?
That were physically. So, the other company, he did it from Google Earth. So, I wasn't going to make them come out, because I thought, once I got the first price, I thought it was probably not, it was probably slim chance to begin with, so.
There, there's several stations over at Stewart's, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but those are for Tesla, I think they're proprietary, aren't they?
Yes, you can only use those.
Only Tesla can use those.
Really?
So, the thing I, I have two things. The power issue is a reason to have solar first, because that might solve part of the power issue. Also, with solar, so even if we use grant money to get solar, the state will send us a check. I'm not sure how much, but then that check can be used to pay for the stations, which will then get another check because of EV stations.
Right.
And keep rolling it over into things.
So we'll hang on to it, and, and see what happens with the solar and.
Catherine, you know how long it takes to charge?
A car?
Yeah.
Oh, I have no idea. Anybody?
Who?
Yeah, there, there are different kinds.
Oh, yes, there's, there's level one. Level one is like, is, is equivalent to a, um, an extension cord is my understanding, so that would be many, many hours. Level two is stronger, and it would be several hours. But this is more of a convenience issue, it's not meant for people to come, you know. You're, you come because you got a traffic ticket, you can charge your car, you come to use the library, you can charge your car. You know, I, I, I think of it as more of a service to our residents than anything else.
Any other comments? Alright, uh, vehicle policy, Ellie.
Well, while, while we're talking about vehicles, um, we have been asked by PERMA, our insurance folks. To have, create a vehicle usage policy for the town, which we do not have. It's in the packets here. Kathy Gallinger again, and I worked on it, um, sent it through for comments, uh, a few days ago. And, uh, here, if, uh, anybody has anything to add or subtract, or what have you. Next step will be to send it off to the folks at PERMA and ask for their input. So I would hope by next meeting, we'll have something polished and at least close to final. That we can, we can discuss and perhaps even vote on at that point.
Um, Shane's gonna wanna review that as well, I imagine.
Well, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's not a law, it's a policy.
Okay.
I don't know if we need to get us.
Yeah, everything goes.
All our policies?
Yeah.
Just timeline, just thinking timeline.
Everything goes through him.
We did a couple that didn't.
So June might not be until, oh.
We did a couple that didn't go to Shane.
Yeah, I don't know, and.
Don't think they went, like the one for, well, anyway, I think we did a couple that didn't go to Shane. But anyway, okay, that's fine, we'll send it to him, sure.
Is, is this the policy, and?
It's at the back.
Yeah.
It's, it's a marked up.
That's the first rough draft of the policy.
Yeah, it's a marked up.
So it's mileage and insurance and.
Right.
Use of personal vehicles.
Mainly it's usage, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, mainly it's usage.
It's putting in print the obvious things and pretty much what everybody already does.
Well, that's right.
It's set out.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
Alright, any other discussion? More time.
Okay, at the last town board meeting, um, a gentleman who is not here tonight, but was here at, at that meeting stepped up. And spoke at the public comment session about a, uh, wetlands moratorium. That had recently been passed in, uh, or was being considered, perhaps at that point, in the town of Red Hook. It was actually passed a couple of weeks ago. Very controversial, a lot of discussion, uh, and, but it was passed, I believe it was a, a split decision on the part of the town board. Up there. Uh, in any case, the suggestion was made that we should look into this, or something similar for the town of Clinton. And, uh, Michael asked me to, to pursue this, uh, which I did. I had conversations with, oh, I would guess fourteen, maybe, excuse me, fourteen or fifteen people. Who, uh, in the town, who work with, uh, our wetlands law and wetlands in general, people from the CAC. People from the task force, uh, planning board, the CEO, building inspector. Town attorney as well, and the overwhelming consensus is that, uh, we don't need it in our town. We have a wetlands law that has served us well for fifteen years. I believe it was two thousand eight the wetlands law was passed. If there are issues, it can be revisited, it could be strengthened, changed, updated, what have you. Uh, that we don't need a moratorium, um, we have maps, we have the national resource inventory. The planning board who is alert and, uh, sensitive to these issues, um, and the ZVA in fact, as well. And so the consensus was that it was simply unnecessary, and even potentially counterproductive.
Alright, any other, uh, comments? So we move on to, uh, dog control officer, so.
A lighter note.
So the SPCA, uh, pulled out of our contract for dog control. And not just ours, the whole county. The person who used to have the contract with them to do our town. Pleasant Valley, Lagrange, and Beakman has contacted us, uh, and those towns. And we are now working on an inter-municipal agreement between our four towns. To hire this person as a dog control officer. But it isn't done yet, so we hope next meeting to approve it, um, but that's where I'm at.
Okay, I would, um, I, it's probably, these things are on your radar, but just in case, um. Are we calling this person directly when?
Oh, yeah, I spoke to him, yeah.
No, no, I mean, so if I have a stray dog and I need the dog, do I call them? It used to be you would call, you know, the mainland, okay.
Yeah.
And, um, will it be the same as SPCA, where they don't actually house the dogs? They usually take them to various locations?
That's a good question, so, um, we are just doing a dog control agreement. Uh, housing is different, cause the towns are so far apart. So, it looks as if our housing will be handled by Ryan Beck. Who has the facilities, um, but also the DCO, if we hire him. Will, is working that out for us.
Okay, so they're gonna advocate our behalf and get someone that will, will take the animals, should we need a place to keep them?
Exactly.
Okay, great.
So that's where I'm at, with that.
I think that's the governor of South Dakota who offered to do that.
The last thing is a, an agreement between, uh, West Clinton and the town of Clinton. So, uh, Debbie CFD is renovating Station Two in Saltville. And needs to store their trucks somewhere. So, uh, our highway department has graciously accepted them storing trucks. In their garage, but we need a, um, contract with them. And insurance and all of that. So, uh, this motion creates a contract, and I am in touch with Todd. And, uh, the chairman of West Clinton. And, uh, once this is signed, hopefully tomorrow, they can store vehicles. So if you can make the motion for me.
Sure. Motion by Supervisor Witten, that the council, the town board approves the following resolution. Uh, agreement between the town of Clinton and West Clinton Fire District for vehicle storage. While Station Two undergoes renovation and authorizes directs and empowers the town supervisor to sign the agreement.
Anybody sec?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Do we have any, do they give any indication how long this would be for?
Yeah, there's a date. December fifteenth?
They're thinking, they're asking me to submit, not that I, you know.
Actually, it'll probably be before then, but they said December fifteenth, just in case.
And then, not that I'm anticipating any issues, but should there be an issue, who are they gonna be corresponding with, Todd or you?
Hopefully, yeah. Cause the contract I have to sign.
So everybody's clear on who's.
But I talked to him too.
Well, I know, but.
Might you have any idea specifically what they're renovating?
Well, I only know the building.
Yeah, me too, that's why I'm asking.
I would say that building, uh, is not sufficient for their trucks. They're adding a addition, I hear from the audience.
I thought you were talking about the West Clinton on Hollow Road.
The one over here.
You're talking about a different one.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. I thought it was Hollow Road, and I couldn't imagine what they were doing.
I don't remember, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright.
Sorry.
Motion carries. Resignation.
Okay, um, start off with an appointment. Move that we appoint Rhodey Ny Black, I hope is the correct pronunciation, Ny Black. As constable, effective May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Rate of pay, twenty-four dollars and sixty-five cents per hour. Is there a second?
Sec.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I will also move that the, uh, that we, town board agrees to promote Ryan Mackin to the position of HMEO. Effective May sixth, two thousand twenty-four, with a rate of pay, as per the CSEA contract of twenty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Per hour, with full medical eye and dental coverage, with an employee contribution of fifteen percent. With paid leave benefits, as per the CSEA contract. There's a second?
Second.
And discussion?
All in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Are there any training costs associated with him?
Uh, not yet, but we're in discussion.
Okay.
To be determined.
Yeah, like, there's one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, you want me to read that, okay. I'll move on behalf of the supervisor, that the town board approves, uh, resolution number of twenty twenty-four. Appointment of summer employees, is there a second?
Sec.
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Lawrence.
Okay, be it resolved that the town board approves the May fourteenth general fund warrant, vouchers numbered two fifteen through two eighty-four. Totalling sixty thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. And the May fourteenth highway fund warrant, vouchers numbered one thirteen through one forty-four. Totalling sixty-six thousand four hundred dollars and sixty-seven cents. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Can you read the?
Uh, on behalf of the supervisor, move that the town board approves the following resolution. Resolution number of twenty twenty-four, motion to move funds. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
What, what, what? Timeout.
We're, we're moving it from one convention and training code to another convention and training code?
Yeah, cause one code is, uh, has spent too much. And the other hasn't.
Who's whose?
Uh, I think the one is town board, and what's the other code?
Ten ten and twenty twenty, twelve twenty, twelve twenty, excuse me.
Twelve twenty is.
Town board, town.
Yeah, town supervisor.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And can you read?
Sure, approve the supervisor, move that we approve the supervisor's report for April twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And, any other announcements, or? Yeah. So we'll move to public discussion.
I believe that, I don't know if it was Kathy or us in general, received an award from PERMA?
Uh, we did.
Yes, we did.
Well. Yeah, cause of a length of time.
Oh.
Being with them.
Not nearly as exciting as Carol's.
Not as exciting as Carol's, but nonetheless.
For thirty years now.
I thought they were recognizing us for all the new policies we've developed.
You've been writing.
No, no. That's just for being here.
Time.
Showing up.
Showing up.
There you go. Okay, sorry.
So is anybody gonna talk on non-agenda items? Is all open, you? Alright, alright, so I make a motion to open the floor to public discussion.
Second.
Any, uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Jeff Newman, MCEI, uh, I'll try to be quick. First of all, I just wanted to congratulate you on, uh, the, um, Farm Operation and Agricultural Business Law and passing that. I think it'll be a huge benefit to a lot of the farms in our area by giving them additional revenue streams. So, uh, just, uh, congratulations on passing the, um, uh, Farm Operation and Agricultural Business Law. I think it'll be a real benefit to a lot of the farm operations in the town by giving them additional revenue stream, so, um, I think that's fantastic. I wanted to, uh, speak to, there was a question you had about, um, responsibility for potential violations. Um, and you had mentioned, like, for, for example, somebody who puts a shed on somebody's property, is that installer responsible? And this is something that Shane and I just recently reviewed, uh, and the way that our law is worded, uh, it speaks not to property owner. But person or persons of responsibility. Uh, so we will be pursuing all persons of responsibility whenever there's a, uh, apparent violation.
Interesting.
Uh, because we do often find that contractors, uh, for example, are not sharing, um, with the property owner. What they know the rules to be, for example, and the property owner shouldn't necessarily hold the responsibility for that, cause.
So that includes real estate agents, as I mentioned?
Um, well, the real estate agents, probably not, that would be a harder thing to move, but yeah, that was what.
But the guy who sold the shed to somebody would be?
No, wouldn't be responsible for the installing, so probably not.
Okay.
Uh, the other one is, um, that, to thank you for looking at the wetlands issue. Um, it is something that we have to pay attention to, as we mentioned a number of times, is DEC is decertifying their maps. Um, and I appreciate the request for a moratorium. Um, but I think, in my opinion, the more important task before the town board would be to, um, determine how we'll handle the requirements. Or, uh, any of our laws that point to the DEC certified maps, because they'll go away. And there's multiple ways to do that, um, including requiring certification by an engineer, for example. Uh, and, but how you wanna look at changing those laws, I think, uh, for that part. Uh, and then the last one was the, sorry.
Hold that thought, can you refresh the board, when, cause it's not, the DEC's maps are not going, they've announced it, but it's gonna be a while, what's the date?
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know the month, but.
And of course, these are fifty-year-old maps that are somewhat dubious anyhow.
Yes.
They've never been updated.
Yeah.
But anyway.
Uh, and then the last thing, and this is, it's another, you know, issue, um, to figure out and related to the short-term rental law. Um, and the idea of, um, people who are buying homes just to use them as short-term rentals, and how to address that. Um, the issue of a definition for occupied comes up rather frequently, I would say, and we've looked at that a number of times. And, uh, the town doesn't define occupied, so I would recommend to the board that you come up with a definition for occupied. Um, we do define occupancy, um. Which is defined as the use of a building, structure, or land. So, occupancy, uh, imagine a certificate of occupancy, isn't about who's there, or how long they're there, or what they do there. What they're, it's about what they do there, right, it's about the use, right? Uh, in addition, when we start talking about, um, whether or not somebody is present, um, and they live there. Um, it crosses into constitutional issues, so something else to pay attention to, um, in terms of cross-state commerce, for example. Uh, so I wanna make sure that what we write, um, is addressing what the issue is. And I would recommend looking at the, um, how the IRS defines what they call the main home, or the, the, um, primary residence. Uh, and there's certain criteria that they list for that, uh, and that may be something to look at, how much addressing that.
I wanna thank you for that. Uh, I am in discussion with Shane about.
Great, great.
And I did ask him that very question. Would it be, is it legally defensible?
Yeah, great, that's what we want, sure.
He said yes.
Great, okay.
It is legally defensible, which is not to say that you're gonna get what you want. But that if he had to go to court over this absentee owner business. He said he could do it.
Okay.
He could make a case for it, so.
Yeah, good, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, I will make a motion to close public discussion and return to regular order of business.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for.